Illegal city signs all over the city.
City signs.
City signs, master signs, furniture going out of business signs, somebody's getting blasted.
Is that at Madison?
Yeah.
Where at?
Uh, South Van Wart Road at Ethica Gin and South Van Wart at seventy-eight. And then there's one in Fuller Hill too. I started to pick it up, but when I started Fuller, I noticed if somebody arrived.
What's the third one?
Huh?
What was the third location?
Uh, Ethica Gin at South Van Wart.
Yeah, I got that.
And then Ethica Gin, I mean, uh, South Van Wart at seventy-eight.
That's First Baptist, okay?
Yeah, First Baptist.
We've got ten seconds.
And then, uh, the other one is Fuller Hill.
Ten seconds.
Fuller Hill?
Fuller Hill, that's Howard's Furniture.
On Dallas Highway or? Howard's Furniture.
It is now. I don't know what this is, but it's right in front of George Spencer.
Are both those out of commission, those two, or is that still in the one?
So what's that one, Mac one?
He has a hearing and he might be a little late.
Oh, yeah, that's not us.
You call Nick? Nick, did he come over and test it this time?
On him too, the sign though.
It's not streaming.
No.
It's on, but it's not working right, so.
We definitely need to get our system fixed. I want you to make the upgrade. It stinks too old.
We're waiting on technical difficulties right now. You good? Do they know if we are streaming or not?
At least it's recording, maybe it'll play later.
Yeah. Good afternoon, everyone, it's three oh one. Uh, call this meeting of Mayor and Council together, this special call meeting, this October the twenty-fifth, two thousand and seventeen. And I would, uh, hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at the agenda. This sound like it's awful loud. Um. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented?
Does that move?
A move in a second? Did you get the second, Lisa? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. We'll move along into the public comments section of the meeting. Anyone wishing to offer a public complaint, complaint, public, public comment, please do so. State your name for the record and limits your comments to three minutes.
And it's gonna be a repeat of my last one, at a work session, when you guys are collecting information and, you know, to make a decision, um, and the public doesn't know what's gonna be talked about, it makes sense to have the public comments afterwards, so we can comment on what the discussion was about. I mean, I don't really have anything to say right now, but I'm pretty sure I will by the end of today. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Anyone else? Okay, this will close the public comments portion of the meeting. Tab A, new business. First off is our cancer care problem, uh, program, not problem. Uh, Ms. Stephanie, Wendell.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Both of these agenda items this afternoon are enhancements to our self-funded benefits program. So, um, we have a cancer care program that, I'll let Wendell get into the nitty-gritty of it, but, um, it's, it's an enhancement again to our program to protect us and protect our, our members from being misdiagnosed or not being treated properly if they are diagnosed with cancer.
Good afternoon. Um, yeah, so what we did with the healthcare was we basically restructured how you purchase healthcare, right? So we took a pickup truck, ripped out the motor, the transmission and the steering and put it all back in, right? So now we have a self-funded plan that we have more control over. Once you gain control of those pieces, you can now on, onlay or layer on additional services that are gonna provide additional cost savings and, um, and access to different services. One of those services in the cancer care, I don't know if you know this or not, but about eighty-four percent of all first treatments, chemo treatments of cancer are misdiagnosed. And those treatments cost thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars. So the second, third time you get that treatment, uh, they finally get it right. Well, this, this program works with the oncologist to look at biomarkers and more target those, um, uh, treatments so that it's effective the first time. And it's a better outcome for the patient, it's a better outcome for the plan from a cost perspective, and it provides a healthier patient long-term. So, um, we had looked at some of these things originally, but as you know, we had a lot of program services and contracts to get this done the first time, we thought, by adding, uh, these other pieces that might have just kind of been more complex. So, what we're asking for is that you just, it's an onlay service, it's just a bolt onto your existing plan, and in the event that you have, uh, a cancer scenario, they will work with their oncologist to find a better path for treatment, better for the employee, better for the health insurance cost for the city.
It will cost us approximately two thousand dollars a year, um, at a hundred and, well, a dollar and thirty cents per member, and I estimated it at a hundred and twenty covered members on our plan, which is a little bit high, but in anticipation of more.
Stephanie, you already talk a little bit low. Is it possible for you to? You ought to get a little closer to the mic.
Yes, what I said was, um, it's gonna cost us about two thousand dollars a year. And that estimate is based on a dollar thirty per covered member, and I estimated it at a hundred and twenty members, but that is actually a little bit target high, but I'm trying to anticipate new physicians and, uh, new employees.
If, if there were just one single patient that had cancer, I think it would take thirty years of these costs to, to be more than the savings you would generate from just one patient. So, if that gives you kind of perspective of the value of the service.
Wendell, is this something that's been going on for a while and I just haven't? I know it sounds like it's coming all over the world, it sounds like up here too. Um, this is not a new program, this is something that's been around for a while.
Uh, this particular vendor is the leader in the vendor, this is all they do. They do oncology treatment, uh, and they work with, uh, with oncologists and, um, cancer treatments all around the country. And, 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 uh, they've been a business, I, I don't know how long they've been a business, but they're leader and they're one of the biggest in the industry.
I guess I was talking about the, the idea of, of having a marker so that you can sort of streamline the process of chemo. Uh, that's been around for a while and it's something that's proven we're not.
That's right, it's been around a long time. Unfortunately, um, it's a higher-end service, so only some of the higher-end cancer treatment centers use the biomarkers for this, and a lot of times, a lot of local treatment centers or other treatment centers do not. So this is a way to, to provide consistency for those, those super good facilities and those really poor facilities that your employees might be treated in. So, it really just helps everybody. And, and, and so the, the, the process of, of customizing chemo for cancer patient treatments has been around a long time.
Okay.
And this is what they're doing, but now they're just making sure everybody gets that same high level of treatment that they might not get from facility to facility.
So, just for clarification, when you say they're misdiagnosed and so health insurance money is being spent frivolously or whatever, misdiagnosed with cancer? Or they're not giving them the correct treatment for the type of cancer they have?
To the second point, they misdiagnosed the treatment because of the biomarkers they're not using to customize that treatment to that particular type of cancer.
And this allows us to have more control in how that process works?
It, it ensures that the customized treatment works the first time instead of second, third, or fourth time.
So, what, are, are you asking us to approve this at this meeting? Okay. But I'm, I'm a little bit familiar with this and, uh, I've seen, uh, some of the, the research on this stuff. I think it's a great idea for us to be doing. Uh, I think that Wendell's probably correct. If, if and when, because there will be a win, we have, uh, someone that, that gets cancer, how they're treated, we're gonna save tons of money. And now we're doing this partially self-funded insurance, so I would, I would be in favor of, uh...
We're under the impression that you'll be using the service sooner or later, that's why we're bringing it twice today.
So I would make a motion that, uh, we approve this, um, cancer care program as presented.
Two thousand dollars a year.
Two thousand dollars a year, approximately a dollar thirty per employee.
I'll second it.
Okay. Something I'm gonna start doing, this will be as good a time as any to, to bring it up, is, is, uh, there was a little bit of confusion about a, an item that was presented a while back. And, uh, when we went back and looked at the, uh, what was actually voted on, it was, it was, uh, so vague that it really didn't make any sense. So, what I'm gonna start doing is, is ask that when we make a motion, that, that you state the motion completely as you want it to be, uh, approved. And in addition to that, Alisa, I'm gonna put you on the spot. And once it's approved and received a second, then I'm gonna ask you to read that back, uh, to the council so that what we've gone on is exactly what we thought we were getting, so.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the cancer care program as presented by Stephanie Rooks.
We have a proper second.
My second, um, the motion and this, the care program's dated ten twenty-four.
That's as presented.
Yeah, as presented, okay. Now would you read the motion?
Gil made a motion to approve the cancer care program as presented by Stephanie Rooks.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Unanimous.
Okay. The next one is got to do with our prescription.
I can't get on my city email.
This is in addition to USRX Care, which is our prescription provider currently. Okay.
That's better.
This is a enhancement to our prescriptions. This is in addition to our USRX Care program. Um, this would allow us to, uh, source prescriptions internationally and locally if we can find better prices. So, uh, I'll let Wendell get into how it works and...
Right. So, prescription drug charges as it relates to the total cost of your health insurance plan runs about thirty-eight percent. So of the million six, I think, if I'm speaking correctly, about thirty-eight percent of that is prescription drugs, and it's climbing. It's probably gonna be closer to forty, forty-five percent within a year and a half, two years, really because of the types of drugs that are coming on the marketplace, how they're being prescribed. So sourcing those drugs and ensuring those drugs are adequately being diagnosed and dispensed with prior authorizations is real important. So this program, again, we have a very good PBM or pharmacy benefit manager that sources all the drugs in the United States. This is an overlay program that allows them to really do two things. Number one, if there are certain drugs that they can mail order, for example, um, one, uh, drug, AstraZeneca forty milligram is about four dollars a pill in the United States, and we can get it for thirty-eight cents, uh, through the UK. Same packaging, manufacturer, same box. So why wouldn't we let your employees, um, pay a lower copay and have the plan pay lower costs to get a thirty-day supply or ninety-day supply in a box that shows up in their mail from one delivery address versus another, same manufacturer, same product, same, same representations and warranties on those drugs? So that's what it does. And also, um, as you know, these, these drug manufacturers set aside money to help, to pay for and assist in purchasing these drugs. And so we also allow, um, this, um, process to outreach to your employees and help them fill out manufacturer's coupons. And what we do is, um, uh, seventy, eighty percent of the time, we get that drug for fifty percent less or free inside the United States from those drug manufacturers by going through this manufacturer's assistance process. So, that's what this vendor does. They work with all of your prescription drugs that are being purchased and find the most advantageous way to source those. And remember, those are limited by the prescription drug company, but not by a script source, right? So, they can source them in other areas, and they can also work with your employees to, uh, fill out these manufacturer's assistance coupons. Uh, the way they work is, um, they don't charge you anything, they charge you a percentage of savings. So let's just take, for example, if they can get, if you're paying, let's say, a hundred dollars a month for a drug, twelve hundred dollars a year, and they can get it for free, then they'll charge you twenty-five dollars a month for that drug. So they charge you twenty-five percent of the savings, so you get to keep seventy-five percent of the savings that they generate for you. So, they're very incented to help make sure this plan, um, saves as much money as, as they can. And therefore, their, uh, their agenda is in line with you and your health insurance plans and your employees' agenda, so.
When you say they charge, you're talking about they charge the plan?
They charge the plan, that's correct.
So what is the fifty-five dollar record keeping?
There's a filing fee that the federal government requires, and there's, so there's a record-keeping piece to this, so they charge the filing fee. And that is, um, subjective to the lower cost because it can eat up all their profits, obviously, if they're only making twenty-five dollars a month on the drug and have to pay fifty-five dollars to file, you know, something like that. So as long as their savings and these filing fees are, um, much less than the savings to the plan, then they'll do that.
So how are those filing fees charged though? Is that monthly?
It's, it's for the coupons and it's for, um, you're right, it's just for the coupons.
This is just, this fifty-five dollar fee is only charged when we use a manufacturer's coupon, okay? That's the only records that they have to keep federal, for federal regulations.
They get charged.
So, so they get charged that, so we eat the fifty-five dollars, but it's a one-time fee.
A one-time fee for the city?
I think it's a one-time fee per, per coupon.
Per coupon. Okay. So I think the overall, you know, what we need to be assured of is that, 'cause we're all for saving money, and we're all for improving, uh, these benefits, uh, and especially when they save money. But we wanna be very careful that this doesn't impact formularies and it doesn't cause our employees to have problems getting prescriptions that they already get. So that's what I want you to be cautious of, you know, if we approve this. Um, this is the first time I've looked at, at this. Uh, I know you talked a little bit about bringing us something before, but this is the first time I saw it.
Right.
How many of these coupons are out there, I mean, per coupon?
You know, perhaps a, a way to put this in perspective is Cherokee County did this, and I think they saved three hundred thousand dollars their first month. So, it's a significant savings to the program, and it does not impact the formulary. It's the same formulary, they just turn around and try to find that, uh, in, in a, in a better capacity than, uh, than the PBM or pharmacy benefit manager can. And they take a step further to say, if they can work with the manufacturer to get some of their money, then that's what they do. And it's, and it's still, it's the same formulary, same drug, but they're now asking the manufacturer to contribute dollars to your plan so that you can save money, so that patient can, can, can get that drug.
So the fifty-five dollars is per manufacturer?
It's a, it's a, it's a federal filing fee, they have, they get charged when they, when there's a manufacturer's coupon issued, and so, so they're, so they're subject to that fifty-five dollar fine. So it would be twenty-five, twenty-five percent of the savings plus fifty-five dollars.
When you use a manufacturer's coupon? If they just source it internationally and get a much better price, then there's no fifty, fifty-five dollar charge.
And we'll have a breakdown of that showing how much we paid for those coupons, the fee, the filing fees, all that.
A detailed list every single month.
So we can see how it's working for us. I understand the way it worked when there were like low-income people and they could deal directly, excuse me, I'm fighting a cold, directly with a manufacturer and get either reduced price or free at times. Is that what you're talking about, this working that way for employees? Usually it was income-based, you know, if it was citizen, low-income, they couldn't afford their medications.
But cities and counties are very good, um, populations to work with. According to their guidelines and the amount of money they have with inside what they say are income levels and geographic zones that they can release money to pay for these drugs. But, but what we do is we actually have somebody call your employee and work to help them fill out the coupons, so they don't... Because the problem with the coupon program is you have to know that there is one, and you gotta go find the coupon, then you gotta fill it out, then you gotta know where to mail it, then you gotta follow up on it. And maybe you didn't fill it out right, or you felt something wrong, then they send it back to you to decline. So all of this stuff is a service that's provided to make sure that every opportunity to get manufacturer's dollars are contributed to that employee in their, in the city.
So overall, this, this really seems like a no-brainer. I mean, and that's what you keep bringing us, is some projects that are no-brainers. I mean...
We're trying.
So, you know, and, and there'll, there'll be more opportunity, I don't mean to rush it, but this, this doesn't seem like it's very difficult, and, and I can't imagine any opposition. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this script, uh, sourcing as presented by Stephanie.
Rooks, yep. I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Lisa, would you read the, the motion back, please?
Gil made a motion to approve script sourcing as presented by Stephanie.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, further discussion? Not all in favor? All opposed?
I, I'm fine. I mean, I, I don't take, I don't have, you know, the insurance with the city, but if that's gonna benefit the, the, you know, constituents and, and I don't have a problem.
Okay.
I guess the only thing really that's, that, that we've talked about this.
Unanimous.
Couple, three weeks or days or whatever. Uh, being able to know who the pharmacy is rather than USRexall, uh, I think it's Novus, is that right? On the card that I have, it says nothing at all about Novus. And the doctors that I'm talking to, they, when they call the numbers on the card, they're declined because they don't know anything about Novus. So it may be something that we could do down the road to kind of put that in, in perspective to those people, a card or something.
So, that was a data error. In, in other words, we, we were a little rushed on this one with the amount of time we had. And so, there, there have been, uh, a couple of hiccups. One of the hiccups was, is that USRX Care didn't let their mail-order vendor know, um, that this was going on, that this has been a new client with their VIN number and your group number, hadn't been processed over to them yet, and when they called, they just didn't know that you guys existed. And we apologize for that, we found out about that two days ago, three days ago, Monday, was it Monday, Friday?
Last week.
Okay. But it has since been fixed and the numbers work, but that was, that was a timing and just a data glitch, and we apologize.
That's no problem. I said, I heard one of the policemen having, having a problem, and, and then I saw somebody else having a similar problem. And, and new stuff like that's gonna take, take, oh, I got no, no issue with it. And I agree with, with, uh, with Gil, it makes a lot of difference when that, when, um, uh, this is a no-brainer, so.
And I would just reiterate, he, he, what he's talking about, I wanna make sure that, that we're being vigilant, that, that when employees are reporting any of these hiccups, that you're taking care of them. We knew there'd be some.
Right.
But we wanna make sure that, that the employees don't feel like they're negatively impacted and we're not doing anything about it. I wanna make sure that we are.
And I, so far, there's one still, I'm keeping him updated, but, um, I've taken care of everybody that has had a hiccup and we've had it resolved to their benefit.
Good.
Thank you.
I will pass along just maybe one comment, if I could, please. And that's, um, as you know, we fought an out-of-network hospital claim issue for a year, nine months this past year with your...
Yeah.
And, and so Stephanie actually called me the other day, we were talking, she goes, "It's nice to know with this new process that we can identify a problem, get on the phone with the vendor, and typically by that afternoon, the problem's fixed." This process with your prior carrier or these full-insured carriers would have taken weeks to fix, and we're able to, and we're able now to fix them within hours or days at, at the most. And so, uh, that's the, that's the benefits that you have from buying these or, or structuring, restructuring this healthcare and having these vendors work for you directly instead of having a, a large national insurance carrier that you're just, you know, one of fourteen million people that they have on their plan. So, um, I think we're doing pretty good at kinda getting after those problems when we find out about them and fix them, so.
Thank you, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
I'm familiar with that, with that out-of-network issue as well.
As excited as we all are that this is gonna save the city and save the employees money, we're still a little bit cautious because if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is, so, just, uh...
We will continue to bring, and our job is to stay abreast of everything we can find that's gonna add value to your employees, to your plan, to reduce the cost to your taxpayers and make the city, uh, gain control of the healthcare costs again. So, from time to time, I think we've gotten ninety, ninety-five percent of what we need in place. I think maybe at renewal next year, there might be a couple tweaks we wanna look at, but for the most part, this was a chassis we wanted to put in place so we could start delivering these savings, and I thank you guys for supporting us.
Thank y'all. Number three, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, before we go to him, I don't know if I'm out of line, so y'all tell me what, and I know we don't, uh, come into public comment, but our previous administration decided to put public comment first so the constituents wouldn't have to sit all night through these long meetings. That was the reason for putting the public comments before rather than after, 'cause, you know, it was after, and then they decided to do that so the public wouldn't have to sit through all the long stuff that we'd be doing up here. That was really putting it up front, but now, I just wanna explain that, it's, I don't know which one's better, yeah.
Right, well, and I think the points were taken, that, that in a situation like this where it's not a call meeting, maybe we need to do it at the end.
The other, the short meetings, but...
And I'll talk to y'all, I, I've already started talking to a few of you about that, and, and that's a point well taken. So. Go ahead, sir.
All right. We put together an update that we were gonna talk about last Thursday during the workshop, but didn't have time, so we're gonna try to run through this as quick as we can, ask questions as you go. This will give you an update on some of what we're working on. This new city engineer starts on Monday, the PMZ coordinator starts Monday week, uh, Vicky and I are interviewing library managers tomorrow. The building inspector posting did not go well. Uh, Stephanie, Stephanie and I reviewed applications maybe a week ago. It was supposed to close last Friday, we didn't like the applicants, so we extended it for a week, we're gonna look at them again, we may have to do it again. You know, if we don't get a, a good applicant, then we'll keep going. IT manager closes, I guess that's, is that Friday week? When is that? So just so you know where we're on those, um, I think there's another opening that, um, Sarah is working on for a part-time cashier, and she has three hundred applications or something, so...
Goodness gracious.
Evidently, part-time work out here is a valuable commodity.
How did the IT manager thing go? How's it going?
How many do we have?
We have forty-eight applicants, many of them are very good.
So, so far, so good. I haven't, I haven't reviewed any of them, but those, that sounded like we were making progress. Uh, item number two, so that, um, you have an idea where, where we're headed in a, in a different respect, uh, when we're talking about wellness, so... My old view of wellness was you do the biometric screening, and you have the smoking cessation class, and you incentivize people with gift cards, and you try to get them to do whatever, and it really doesn't change anything. But in our case, we're putting a hundred thousand dollars a month in a pot to pay claims out of. That's the most we can pay. Our expected claims are like nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, the, the maximum claim is a million two. So that's sort of what we, what we're playing with. That two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the question is, are we gonna spend it, are we gonna keep it, right? Well, in the first year, there's no reason to think we're not gonna spend it, 'cause we haven't done anything to really improve the behavior. But the behavior change is gonna come from some things that have never been possible. So the first one, we refer to as closing the gap. So, gap analysis is something that will be possible several months into the program when we can look at individuals who have known conditions who are not being treated. So when we, when we eventually come back to you for a tiered premium structure, what we would like to base the tiering on is whether or not people have a gap or not in their treatment. So in other words, if somebody has no, have no conditions, or they have known conditions, but they're doing the protocol for treating the condition, then they would get a lower premium. But if somebody's not taking medication, or they have to go to the doctor, and they're not going to the doctor, they have to do testing, they're not doing testing, then they would pay a higher premium, right? So that, that's sort of the mindset behind what wellness will be in this. So, so it's a focus, it's a focus on people who are, who have chronic conditions, who are not treating them, as opposed to trying to get people to go to the gym, right? Because the money is in getting people who have conditions to just do treatment. And one of the things that would let us do, for instance, is if we identify, let's say that we have people who are not doing testing, who have diabetes, we can make testing strips free. Or if there's a, a, a medical visit with a MD that they're not doing, we can make the copays on those zero. You know, we can, we can do what we can do on our end to remove obstacles, to get people to just do, you know, what we think they ought to do to control their condition or to improve. All right, then the second thing that will happen is about a year from now, when we have a year's data, we'll be able to look at the data and, and determine who's headed there. So, the software will be able to analyze what people are spending medical dollars on. So the software will be able to analyze what people are spending medical dollars on and identify people that are headed toward diabetes or headed toward hypertension or headed, you know. And, and every year that we own, we're on this, it will get better at predicting, right? And then, and then we'll have a different kind of incentive to get those people that are headed into trouble to stop because that's where the real savings come in. If we can eliminate future occurrences of the big money consumers in the plan, right? So just so you understand, this is a whole different world we're fixing to go into because of data that we've, that we've never had access to. And it will take time to build it, but when we get there, it should be really powerful.
And again, the, the premise behind this is if we had savings in the past, we had wellness programs, but even if we saved money, we didn't save the money. It was the insurance company that we had that saved it. With this program, the incentive is that the money stays here. So, you know, the city would determine what they would do with that when, not if, when we become a better risk to ourselves.
Right. All right. Item number three, while Stephanie and I were interviewing for Janet's replacement, we got an applicant who had just an extremely impressive portfolio. In fact, it was so impressive, I couldn't even read it. And I had to interview the guy and 15 seconds after he sat down, I was in love with the guy. I wanted to hire him right then, even though he, he didn't fit the job that we were interviewing for at all. But anyway, so this, this is who this, who this kid is. He's, he's the son of a high school band director and this kid plays five instruments. He's got an urban planning degree with a master's from a college in London. He's done like a project in China. He's done a land use plan project in Spain. He's worked two summers at Oak Ridge in Tennessee. I mean, I don't know where this guy's going, but I mean, he, to say he was impressive is an understatement, okay? So I talked to him in the interview and I said, look, you know, you don't fit, you don't have the experience. He's got the education, he just, he hadn't done it. And I've got to have somebody that's done it because I can't teach them because it's not, not my field and we don't have anybody that can teach them. So I asked him if he would, anyway, so he has this urban planning degree, has a minor in GIS, and he mentors master's students at his college, his former college in, in GIS. Okay? And so, and he's close enough to extended family that he could stay with them some and work with us. And so what I have pitched to him is to work with us as a contractor, part-time on his schedule while he's interviewing until he gets a job, to come in here and help Pete and Bobby, who will be here Monday, to get our GIS up to speed.
Tell everybody what that acronym stands for.
That's our geographical information. It's the mapping system we use. Well, our, our water and sewer mapping information is incomplete, to say the least.
Restored.
But there's a lot there. It's just not complete and our ability to print maps is real limited right now because of just the expertise in-house. Anyway, so what I would like is permission to bring this guy on board as a contractor. I've offered him a 35 an hour rate, which is about a third of what I'm going to pay any of these engineering firms that we're working with. They're going to be 100 bucks an hour or I'm not sitting here. I think it'll save us money. I think it will, it will get Pete and Bobby off to a good start and hopefully he won't get a job, you know, like the first of November or something, but he could.
So this is what we're talking about with that consulting, because I, right?
This is number three. And he's available.
Sounds like he moves around a lot. Are you sure he's going to stick around Villarica?
No, this guy's not going to stay. He's going to go get a job with like the federal government or something. I mean, he's, he's worked at Huntsville, at the, at the space center. I mean, I don't know where he's going to wind up, but I just want to use him while I can get some, you know, get some time out of him.
I've, I've worked with GIS departments before in other counties and having a GIS system puts you in a different plane than everybody else, all the other municipalities. Because what it does, it identifies what, what parcels are. If someone comes in and asks where a water line runs, if it's up, if it's downstream from a pump station or upstream, you know, where our sewer lines are.
Pipe sizes.
You know, what pipe sizes. That's very important. We've got a situation we're working through right now with the subdivision that the, the city's sewer line is undersized for what they need. So it'll identify all that. And, and it's just a matter of whether we're going to pay someone to do it now or we're going to pay an engineer or someone to do it or, you know, later on. And I, I think it's money well spent, but.
So it's just the GIS he's going to work on?
Yeah, this is unrelated to when you said Pete and.
Yeah, I interviewed.
This is unrelated for, it's number three. It's a different person.
It's number three.
And contract him and pay him how much an hour?
35 an hour while he's interviewing. So he won't be here full-time. He'll just, you know, he'll be here. He's from Madison County, Alabama. So he went to A and M and that's where he's.
But any time that he spends with us, you know, the more he gets on our computer systems, the better off we are down the road.
I think so. Another problem with our system is even where we, where we have records, we've gone out and potholed lines and they're a different size than what the GIS says, so.
That's what I was going to mention. I, I think this will pay back dividends, having this done. I don't, I'm not real thrilled with the idea that we don't, we're going to start this project. We don't know how long he's going to be here, but I'd say let's get it started. Upsetting these GIS maps are going to be hugely important and we do, we have a lot of trial and error even today. You go out and dig and what you think is there is not there.
Yep.
And they find stuff they don't know is there. We find stuff.
I make a motion.
Good.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need a motion. I just know y'all are okay with it. I'll bring you something back at the work session, but I want this guy, I want to get this guy going.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay. What's, what's this guy's name?
Barbershop.
His name is Michael Knotts, K-N-O-T-T-S.
Everybody okay? Any questions?
Y'all good with that? Okay, number four. I have been after Pete for probably the better part of a month to get somebody to come in and help us write water and sewer project RFPs because I don't have the background and he doesn't have the time. And we've got this whole GIFA thing that we've been cooking that we, that we want to go after, but we've got to, we've got to write RFPs and, and technical specs for every one of those projects in order to get things through council and in contracts and those jobs going. So he's finally, he'd been chasing this guy that he, he knew who's retired, who's available. And he, we finally met with him last week. So if y'all are good with the idea of that, that I'm going to bring that to work session in this next meeting. He's given us a proposal and I'd like to use this guy first to do the RFPs and then have him help us coordinate all, all these different GIFA projects. Otherwise, it's going to fall on Pete, which is crazy, right? Because Pete's already doing the water and sewer job and halfway trying to keep up with Charlie and all his guys, which is more than makes sense to me. And then we, so I don't want to put a third thing on him and this, this is a big thing, what we're fixing to do. You know, two or three years of six or eight or 10 big projects is, that's a lot to manage. So.
My que, my question was this, does Bobby Elliott, who's coming on as our engineer, I was thinking some of this would be the sort of things he would oversee. Is it because it's the writing of this? Is he, does he have the ability to do this?
Yes, he could do it too, but Bobby is going to be involved in all of the plan review that comes through the building. And right now, we have people coming in the office all day, every day submitting projects. They're either, they're either building something, they're remodeling something, they're just inquiring about, you know, can I do this or that? He's going to be covered up and he's going to have this new P and Z person and they got to, however much time it's going to take for them to get on the same page. I'm thinking that's at least a quarter, you know, maybe, maybe longer for them to get up to speed. And they're dealing with our zoning ordinances and development standards, which are not great. So they're going to have a lot of angst over the contradictions and the, the things that are missing. So, I mean, Bobby is not, he's not walking into a very happy situation to begin with. He'll, he'll be able to help Pete a lot, but I mean, Pete is hanging on by his fingernails. You know, I keep telling y'all, he's our most vulnerable staff person right now because of what we've tasked him to do. And Charlie and I just had a conversation the other day. Charlie is meeting with Pete every morning for how long? Two or three hours? Every morning, just for them to sort of get their stuff together for the day? I mean, it's, it's a tough situation for him and so we're fixing to throw Bobby and another person in here. I mean, it's, you know, this is going to be a difficult next several months and, and I don't want to wait. We got to get like leak detection and then, and this infiltration program. We got to get some of this stuff going because it's just costing us money every day.
Okay. Who's your RFP man?
His name is Curtis Boswell.
Curtis, and how much are we going to pay him?
His rate is 100 bucks an hour. And he could be available up to probably two days or 20 hours a week, I think. Because he, he is retired once we're dragging him out of retirement.
Any idea how long you think we'll need him?
I don't know. I would think it would take us at least six months to get through all these RFPs and get them all bid and approved, doing them, you know, just sequentially, one after the other.
Are they in the order that you want to do them?
I'm, I'm sort of thinking that. So that was number five is sort of, that's where my head is right now. Pete and I talking about how we're going to do this. The most, the best bang for the buck are the first two. The third one's a public safety issue.
Let's, let's make sure we got my in on four first.
Right, okay.
Any questions? Council questions, concerns? Is everybody okay with it?
I'm going to bring it, I'm going to bring it back to the November meeting if you want to entertain it. Okay. So anyway, so yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of the way that I'd like to see us tackle this thing. So y'all approved some guy named Elio to come in here and help us with the water pressure questions that, that Pete had. So he's, so whoever that is, I, I don't know the guy. So he's been working and, and he is already moving into leak detection. And so what we do in leak detection is drill or tap the water line and we put a probe in the water line that's like ultrasound kind of monitoring and it listens for water flow at night. And then you work back up, you work up the line until you get past wherever the, the flow is. So anyway, so they're working on that, right? And we had a problem with the taps, so we did the taps and the probes and the, and the threads wouldn't, you know, I mean, it's just Murphy's Law, I guess. So anyway, so they're working on that already, but we're not working on infiltration. I'm going to look at Liberty and Pool Road two different ways. We're going to look at running a pipe under the interstate at Liberty, which is real expensive, you know, running it under the bridge, through the support of the bridge. And we're also going to look at drilling wells out there. So I met with the, one of the geology professors at West Georgia that knows this area and consults, you know, with that kind of stuff. And he said that if you look at Villarica, there's a rock structure that runs through it diagonally from the northeast to the southwest. And so playing in there is pretty tough and right in the middle of that is Goldust Park, where you couldn't get any water, which is not surprising. But the northwest corner and the southeast corner, we should have some success and that's where Liberty Pool is. Right? So we may, we're going to look into that too. So I'll, I'll be bringing you some stuff for that as soon as I get a proposal.
Okay. I got a question on that though. Even if you drill a well in that area, you still have to send it to a, would you just put a, a packaged top plant?
It depends on the quality. Yeah, if it's got minerals, we'd have to filter it, you know, you'd have to do something. Plus you got to tank it and potentially, so, yeah. Anyway, so that's, that's sort of where we're headed though, so that we're starting to build a little momentum. We were also told by this guy that GIFA typically will not loan more than 5 million at a time for the kind of things we're doing. So we'd have to go back, you know, year after year to do, if we do, you know, more than five. All right, number six.
Well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Number six. Yeah, you stopped it.
Yeah, I mean, you want to, you want to just talk them over? I mean.
Well, I do because I think it's important for the residents and, you know, what we're doing here and just encapsulate everything you're saying here. This is beginning to address the situations we have. Number one, with water pressure, with water quality and those issues. Those, all these, that's what we're doing here. So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood. But I did have some questions. For example, on item C, I don't want to, you know, I know we have to spend money on, on all these surveys and plans and studies and all this kind of stuff, but I am hoping, and I've already asked you this, so I know the answer. Some of this money that's going to be spent is actually for doing the things, to fixing the problems, not just saying this is what the problem is and then saying, we still hadn't fixed it. In case in point, number C, that is for engineering and attempting to fix the, the problem. D is for engineering and fixing the problem. Many of these are, but I just wanted the public to understand that this is not just throwing money and saying we've got 400 reports now. We know where we are. Most of our residents can tell us exactly where we are right now. So some of this money is going to be spent in actually breaking mortar and, and making, fixing the problems, not just telling us what they are.
Yeah, those first two things, we could work on that for the next three or four or five years. You know, we can, you find one, you fix it, you find one, you fix it. You just keep doing that till you don't have significant leaks or infiltration anymore.
This is, this is kind of related to what you're saying, but, but I want, we've done this before. I've, I've asked the council about this, but there is a water leak in the middle of Industrial Boulevard before Hickory, not Arbor Bend, between Arbor Bend and Hampton Court. Yes. And here's why that's important, because I noticed this week that I guess DOT brought, they started cutting back the edges of the asphalt, which typically means they're about to overlay. So I would love for us, if we've got a leak in the middle of Industrial Boulevard, get it fixed before they overlay it.
Okay.
So, but it, it stays wet in the middle of that road.
You know that one, Charlie?
It was already been looked at several years ago. We determined that was a well, a spring.
We need to tap into that well.
I was going to say, tap it. Tap them springs.
My point on, on this number five is I think that, that A and B are, are very significant and I was just wanting to find out how you were going to structure this in this order. Is that what your, your goal is, this order? Because I think the infiltration and the water leak are huge. And if those things were resolved, it would make some of these other things that we're doing more beneficial.
Right.
So I, that, I, I had a question about whether or not you were going to try to, but I know you'll bring more back to us.
We're going to start on A and B first, but they're not going to get resolved. What we're going to do is find a leak and fix it and find a leak and fix it and find a leak. You know, and we'll just keep doing it till we feel like all the significant leaks are dealt with. And then infiltration, the same thing.
That's mainly through putting those monitors in there that catch the water flowing in the middle of the night.
Yeah, the infiltration, what you do is you put probes in the manholes and you monitor the flow until you have a significant rain event and then you compare the flow during the rain event to when you don't have rain. Well, it should, it should be the same, but if you, if you get a big rush of water during the rain event, that's how you know there's a problem. And you work your way up the line until you get one manhole above it. So it's very time consuming in calendar time. And there's times of the year where it's faster and times of the year, like what we just went through, where we didn't have any rain, where you would get no progress. So I'm literally, those both, those projects could take years to go through the whole city.
I know it's not one of these lists, but you talked a lot about meter calibration. Have you all already done that?
No. Pete thinks that they can do that in-house and so they're working on that now in-house without having to pay anybody to do that.
And I just want to touch on a couple of these. The North Plant expansion from 520 to 840. Basically, what that does is, is allow us to, if developers do start to buy lots up and build on them, we'll have enough capacity at the North Plant to accommodate that. Because we are dangerously close on that one. North Avenue Service Line Replacements, one that is sorely needed. That line's in, in bad shape. And then shortly after that, we need to redo the road. And then Topaz is another water pressure issue that we've got. So, but the, you know, it's, I agree with what Councilman McDougall said, you know, water leak detection and infiltration detection, those are number one and two. But, and, and certainly pressure is a problem. But we need to make sure that we expand our capacity at the North Plant. That's extremely important at this juncture.
Yeah, that list is a doozy.
Yeah.
All right, you ready to go to number six?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, we're, Pete and I are going over to Douglas. Nope, he's coming over here Monday. So, we'll see our first proposal from Douglas for water. So, we'll talk about that at the, at the next work session.
If, if we are going, if the guy that bought 1,340 lots in Mirror Lake, and we're saying, or they're saying that they will not give us more water than Mirror Lake uses, will that be written into the contract with them that those 1,340 would escalate the amount of water that would be brought in?
We haven't gotten to that point. But if, if the, if the price is right, yes, we would want to write it that way, that it would escalate. If we had a, say, we started out with 300,000 gallons a day and it could, we could bump it to 350 or 4 or whatever as, as we grow.
Well, right now, we're only can buy what they use.
Right now, the contract says they'll only sell us what we're using in Douglas.
Right.
Although we, we, we don't actually buy any water from them because of the price. But that's the line.
Is it what we're using in Douglas or what they're supplying in Douglas? Because they only supply a subdivision or two in Douglas County, part of Villarica.
What they would sell us would be what our customers use who are in Villarica and in Douglas.
That's based on current usage though. I think that the question is, will you have something in the contract?
I'd like to.
To accommodate growth.
But if the rate's bad like now, then it doesn't matter. But yeah, if we get a good rate, then yeah, I would hope that we could, we could grow it as we go.
I think that our contract allows for growth. It's just that we, we haven't wanted to grow it because we don't want to buy it.
Mm-mm. It's five something thousand. It's not a good deal.
They doubled the rate way back when.
Tom, can you explain the rationale here? What, what does this give us? If, if we enter these agreements with Douglas and Carroll County, how does this address our water needs for the future?
So, what Pete is facing right now is because of the leaks and because of our growth, we are using, however we're using it, more water than we can make with our permit and plant and water source. So, we have three constraining factors. The permit's a million five, the plant is a million five, but the water supply is about a million two or, or so. We're selling about a million three, but we're buying and making together sometimes 2 million gallons a day. So, we've got a lot of water that's either unbilled because of the meters or it's going somewhere and, and we're not seeing it. Okay? So, if we get into a couple of contracts with our neighbors, then that buys Pete some time to make some improvements at the water plant. Because now, every time he has to do any kind of work that takes the plant offline, we're having to go totally to Carroll County and buy all of our water, which represents about 25% of their capacity. So, they can make eight, eight million a day. And we're, if we're doing 2 million a day and not making any, then we're buying all 2 million from Matt, right? Which, most days is okay, but on a, on a bad day for him, that pushes him all the way up close to his capacity. And that's why he started pursuing building another reservoir is because of us. Because he sells about 5 million a day to folks other than us. So, when we drop 2 million demand on him, it pushes him to seven. And he can only make eight. And his, you know, hair on the back of his neck starts standing up because he's got nowhere to go. He, he has a contract with Douglas to do the same thing that we're talking about, but it's expensive. They, and they each have that arrangement with the other so that their plants can go down or whatever and they can buy water from each other.
But this puts us in a great position because we're able to have two partners if we need, if we need one.
If, if. Douglas County's prices is high.
Right.
Because it was higher.
And that's where Carol's is headed too. So, we gotta do the same exercise with them.
Hard spot.
Anyway, so we're working on it. We haven't heard anything back, back from Matt yet. So, we don't have anything from him. All right, questions on number six? All right, number seven. We reached out to Sync Global as we consider the possibility of having to move City Hall. And you see the quotes. The Georgia Power Building and the Welcome Center are similar. The library is about three times that. And the North Plant is just cost prohibitive. But you should understand that the way that we operate the North Plant, we have a iPad with cell service running a hotspot. And the computer out there is wireless running off the iPad hotspot. That's how that plant is operating.
But it's cost prohibitive?
Yeah, it's 40 grand to run fiber out there. So, we, we're gonna get back in and look at other options. What I want to tell you about all that is that what this is based on is a single line running on the west side of the property to the Georgia Power Building and a single line running to the library on the Horace Luther side, the east side of the Regions Bank. If we could work a deal with the fitness center and the dentist to get an easement, we could go Georgia Power Building, then to each of those, and then to the library. And it would save us five or six grand. So, when we have that conversation about the driveway, we need them to do that. So, that's where we're headed with that.
Could you not do something similar with the post office?
The post office is on a na, like some kind of national thing with AT&T. So, they're not on Sync Global.
But I'm talking about running the line instead of doing through the property, unless the fitness center and the dentist office wants to be on the line?
Well, that's, that's what we're hoping.
Okay, okay.
Any questions about that? I'll, I'll bring you something back when we get farther into that. That deal is potentially two months away from being consummated, the, the Regions Bank, City Hall thing. So, that may come up sometime between now and the end of the year. All right, number eight.
Well, let me, I probably don't want to know the answer to this, but what happens if the internet goes down as far as the North Plant's concerned?
You mean the hotspot?
You, you lose, um, you lose the ability to communicate electronically. And we have a guy go out there and sit onsite, right?
So, we have a backup plan?
Well, it's ma, it's alt, it's absolutely.
Manual backup plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, labor intensive backup plan.
Okay.
We have a backup to the hotspot?
I don't think, not electronically. Isn't that true? Isn't it just?
We just have one, huh?
Just an iPad.
Can you give us 18 acres of land that will be run from town to town?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, I've, I've not pursued it with AT&T. We'll look into it. I just wanted to show you what I had. That's the first thing I'd gotten back on it. All right, Gaston Billboard. Somewhere in the past, we leased land to Alan Gaston for a billboard out on 20. And the way that we structured the deal was instead of him paying us, he gives us one side of a billboard on 20 in Villarica. And Chris has used it for, what have you got on it?
We've never used Gaston. When I got involved, when I got involved with it, they were dissolving, so we never.
Oh, so you didn't get to see it? Okay, so we used it.
Wasn't that done through the tourism board?
Right. We, we used it in Chris's office then before Chris. So, somewhere right around the time Chris got here, one of the predecessors, my predecessors decided that they wanted to renegotiate the deal or something and quit using it. So, now we're getting nothing for it. And, and then now the, the, the term is expired, right? So, I've talked to Chris and we would like to continue that same in-kind compensation instead of money. So, before I go get involved in all that, are y'all good with that? If we, if we can reestablish that where Chris has got use of a billboard and he can put tourism stuff out there?
Is, is that decide real visible? I mean, is, which one is it?
It can be, I think the way the language is written, it can, he, Alan has the choice for any of the I-20 billboards in Villarica's city limits. So, he gets to pick.
One side of one of them.
One side of one of them. So, what he got out of this is basically, he gets to use one side of the, of, of the new billboard on our land without paying for the land.
When you sit down, I, I have some knowledge about the history of this also. And frankly, he owes us a lot of money on back rent right now.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
For what?
For the fact that we have not been using a, a sign for a long time. We've told, I mean, he was told, I don't remember which city manager it may have been, David Miller.
That's what I was told.
I think it was.
You know, told him we needed to start paying rent. And he hasn't paid any rent at all for over a year.
Yes, a year and a half is what I heard, or almost two years.
So, I'm okay with, with the in-kind trade. I actually, I like that idea. I think that we could benefit from that in a lot of ways. But I was curious about a contract that didn't have some other form of compensation if we weren't doing the in-kind. So, you're, what you're saying is that it does?
It does. And I, I think we had told him that we were gonna just cancel the contract. I mean, I, I think if we choose to use the, the in-kind trade, that's fine. But we just need to decide what to do. Because we had told him we were gonna cancel the contract.
So, is that how we ended up not using it?
Uh, probably. And there was something else. The Board of Tourism was dissatisfied because we were using a sign halfway to Birmingham for the Goldust Park. And we didn't like that, and they didn't like that.
Yeah. It was in Oxford, I think. Oxford, Alabama.
So, what do we do about the money he owes us?
Well, we need to have a discussion with him about that.
David and I will work on that.
Talk him about that and come back to us.
Questions?
So, he used a billboard, I think it was actually between Heflin and, and the state land, and this one?
No, we just used one.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's changed around from time to time. It was here for a while, then Alabama for a while.
Okay, okay. Only one. All right.
All right. Number nine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Vicki and Sarah and I met with the, the new interim, uh, regional guy who was provided by the state and the chair of the regional system. And we were given this to explain to us his analysis or his conclusion about where the regional system was headed financially. And honestly, in my whole career, I've not sat through many presentations like what we sat through. Um, I tried to ask him direct questions about the condition of the system and where we were headed and what our obligation was. And I was not satisfied with the answers. Is that a succinct summary of the situation? Vicki tried, Sarah tried. He is a master at talking and saying nothing.
[laughing]
If you know the type. Been in the business 40 years. Um, so, what we, what we had was apparently years and years of financial mismanagement in the regional system that involved money coming in primarily from the county but from the state. And it being allocated out to everybody sort of willy-nilly, maybe changing from year to year, maybe not, but going to things maybe it shouldn't have. And maybe not all going to things it should have. And not really keeping up with their overhead costs. And so, pulling that money out of the pot of money and whatever, I don't know. Um, and then specifically related to us, there was apparently a $150,000 grant available during the construction process that depending on the story, Vicki, you want to even try to explain the different versions that you've heard of that? I mean.
There were just, I don't even want to go all the way into that, but I guess the point that they failed to see the reimbursement is to win.
We didn't get the money anyway.
I was gonna say, suffice it to say we didn't get the grant.
For whatever reason, whether they didn't apply for it in time or they applied for it and then they didn't submit the rent, the, something else in time. And something happened, you know, and we didn't, and so the regional system didn't get the money. So, that's, that was like 150 grand of whatever they're short, right? Because the money got spent on, on the library. So, anyway, I, so what he presented to us is what he is recommending happens with future allocation, with future monies that come through the sys, through the regional system and how it goes out. Uh, it doesn't satisfy me because it doesn't explain how they're gonna become solvent again. Because in my view, they're, they're, they've, they've obligated themselves for more than they have. And they don't have a source of money really except these grants or whatever you call them. What do you call them? Grants, allocations, whatever, whatever the county and the state are giving them. So, their cash position's not good. Their, their accounting system is not good. When the former director was there, they didn't use accounting software evidently. So, they, so what Vicki would get when she asked for something would be something in, from Excel, you know, where they just typed up something. He's trying to go back and actually put all this in a system and use it. They use a software called Blackbaud. And so, he's got somebody that's, that specializes in, in that software coming in to help him. He's leaving at the end of December. I personally don't think that he is going to do anything except tell us what he's told us. And then he's gonna ride out of town. And then the new person's gonna come in and they will have the option to start all over on this and go whatever way they see fit. But I expect, I, I have a high, I assign a high probability to the, to us not getting all of the book money that we've been getting going forward until we've in some, in some way repaid what we got that was more than what he's saying we should have. So, we're gonna be repaying this debt over time out of future book money. That's, that's what I'm concerned is gonna happen.
So, how much is he saying we were overpaid?
190.
190,000?
And 150 of it, I guess, is, is the, the construction related, grant related.
You know, that was gonna be my question, right?
We've struggled to get information this whole time. And I guess this is the explanation.
Well, we're, no, we're getting there though. So, Sarah, give him, give him like the Reader's Digest version of what you took away from that. Because you were in the mid- that, because you were in the meeting.
Yes.
Yep.
If people can hear.
I think, like Tom was saying, it was hard getting a straight answer. On one hand, they were saying the way it'd been done previously, the previous director was allocating it using her method. And so he was kinda saying in one hand that her way, that she did it her way, that was just right for that time. So my question to him was, if you're calling her methods right for the however long she was there, then how can you come back and say that we owe you money if we were using the book money that was allocated to us? So that's my frustration, is you can't call it right on one hand and then demand to be repaid on the other hand. But like Tom said, the regional library system itself, I mean, they don't have cash, they don't have the funds, so they're living off of other library money anyway. So it's just not a healthy system overall.
But you knew where I was headed with that. This is part of the problem. The council has asked for accounting on that project over there. We'll never know, possibly.
He has given us an updated list of their costs in the library, the library construction itself, but again, we're, we're, do we trust that final number? I'm not sure.
You've said repeatedly you don't trust anything that we've gotten.
Okay, so how this affects us directly is book money, and also the regional library pays for a portion of the library director's salary, is that correct? Or is that just a rumor also?
Right. They wanted to kinda get into what the money we had been given in the past was for, was it for a person, was it for book money? I said, what does it matter to go back and look at that? As far as the past two years that I have been here, the 2016 money, we didn't see, we did not get a check in 2016 because supposedly that was attributable to the construction cost. And in 2017, we haven't gotten a check either. So in the time I've been here, I've never seen a check from the West George Regional Library System. So yeah, whether in the past, whether it was for books or a leased employee, I think there's some confusion on that.
All right, this is a question from maybe our city attorney and our city manager. Who has the authority to make that decision where that money is spent that comes from the regional library? Do we ever see an accounting of that, the council?
My answer to that question, I don't know. I do know this, however, and that is that I've done just a little bit of research here lately, and the whole structure of the relationship between all of the individual cities, not just Villarica, but all of the cities that are part of the regional library system is not very clear, is not very well defined, and needs some attention right away. Because there are state laws that set forth, you know, how a regional library system is supposed to be run. I'm not sure that this one is being run under those statutes, so-
That's as close as I've ever heard David Mecklen say there was a problem.
Let me say it more directly, there is a problem.
[laughing]
And, you know, if you ask me, you know, where's the contract between the city and the regional library system? I don't know.
That's what I'd like to know something about, because the picture he's painting here is an awful relationship. Looks pretty bad up to now, and it doesn't look like it's gonna get any better. So what is the agreement?
Absolutely. Well, we need to establish one. I mean, the whole library, regional library system has been in place since the 60s, I think, and it was so much smaller, so much, I mean, it was back when the library here in Villarica was back over there.
Off the street.
Yeah. And we need to, I've told Vicky this morning that I was going to research the state laws to see how we're supposed to be set up, and then once we get that in place, we can formulate a plan for Villarica anyway to approach the regional library saying, here's the agreement that we propose, and to put in all those details about what the money is going for, who's in charge of it. Because the alternative, and I'm not saying this is something that we've decided to do, but, you know, you may wanna become not a part of the regional library system and just run your own system.
Well, I'm concerned about the $190,000, and it sounds like that if we don't, we're not planning to write a check anyway, nobody said that, but whatever benefit we were going to get from them apparently is going to be going toward reducing that 190,000.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Debt, and it just doesn't look like a very good relationship right now.
I think we should have some say-so in that.
I think so.
We just need to figure out what, by what authority we do have some say-so and how our money gets spent.
Vicky, this is a question for you. I have heard comments made by the public that there need to be more books in the library.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have any, is that in the budget?
That's part of what this discussion has been about. So we were told that we were going to have some, that book money come down, but since our meeting, the reality is what we found out what the actual cash position was. And so I did mention to the manager, we need to go back as a city and plan for our own books, because we don't really know when they're going to necessarily have the cash available based on, you know, that pass-through that comes through them, so.
What I'm hearing is we need to plan ourselves. It's our library, it's a brand-new library.
What'd you budget?
I thought the budget had some money in it for books.
For 2017, we did budget, I believe, $30,000 in expense, but there's a revenue that we are expecting. We're expecting a check from the West George Regional Library. So she has money in the budget for the library to go buy books, but we will not be receiving that revenue.
So there won't be the offset revenue?
In 2018, you know, we had set the budget up before we had this meeting, so we didn't know whether that would be, so I took it all out, I took the revenue and the expense out. But since this last meeting, I plan to go back in this, in our new draft of the budget and add money for books.
Good, good.
Yeah, because it's not just a rumor.
Right.
You need books in that library.
And the worst thing you can do is have a new library and people go one time and they can't find what they want and they never come back again.
And that's what's happening. They're coming in asking, where are the new books?
Yeah.
And, you know, we're, we are using the money that's in 2017, even though there isn't anything there, but how do we plan going forward is really what the challenge is gonna be if we don't address it on our end.
Could our friends in the library assist with that?
They are certainly kind of continuing to work on doing some fundraising, but, you know, again, you know, I try to paint the picture, you've just gone from 5,000 to over 16,000, and you have a long way to go in terms of expanding the collection. So they may be able to put a little bit of a dent, but we really are gonna have to plan to do more on our end.
Everything helps, and, you know, outreach to citizens, I mean, if the money doesn't come, it's not there. I just think we ought to think outside the box.
Sure.
And, you know, see if people wanna help in some sort of way, and I would think that would come through the friends group, and maybe there's something we can do where citizens can be, let know of the need, and if they have, you know, wanna help, you know, they can do so.
So what are you looking for here, Tom? You just want some direction, or is this information?
Just information.
So I guess the, what we would probably like to see happen is you and David work on coming to us with something, some kind of recommendation, but certainly an agreement that was sort of right this ship, if that's what we're intending to do.
And Sarah, just to make sure I understood correctly, we're gonna budget for the entire amount of the books that we need, anticipating that we're not gonna get any money from the West George Regional Library. Is that a true statement?
I think that would be wise for 18.
I'm sorry?
I think that would be wise for 2018, since we're not counting on money at this point.
Okay.
So basically, that 130 of the 2,000 that we were supposed to be, we're not gonna get, if that was being said. It's just money we throw out the money. So who could be accountable for that?
I think that's what these guys will look into when they come back to us.
And that was a question that I think you asked about with respect to, you know, what they were saying we owed and where the claim was, so, and didn't get a straight answer on that, so.
This is a new revelation. I didn't know there was money that was supposedly owed by the city to the West George Regional Library. I hope we look into that. I hope that's not the case.
And that, if I can just highlight, that was part of the book money that was coming down, and they weren't necessarily accounting for it. So again, your, what would be your allocation for book money? They just said, hey, you guys got too much book money. But by comparison, when you look at what they're proposing now and the methodology, you're just like, there's no way. If you look at what we were actually getting, what you have on paper versus what you're proposing, we really shouldn't be in this position at all. We should have, actually, more should have come to us, but they say, hey, you know, that's just not the way they chose to do it at that time, so.
And one more comment. I would just continue to work through our board on this. Our library board's very active with our library, so, you know, they need to be a part of this discussion.
We did update them last week, just so that everyone knows. We went through the discussion.
It appears to me that the construction of our library was the straw that broke the camel's back.
I agree with that.
Financial mismanagement had gone on for years, but the overrun, even if it was just 150,000, that was the last straw, I think.
I think that's accurate also. I agree with that, that the building of the Villarica Library exposed a weakness in the whole system. And the methodology for building our library, looking at it in retrospect, was not a good model at all, because you had money coming from three or four different sources, and the management of that construction project was not strong, because there were so many people that felt like they had the right to say something about it. And the main controlling person on behalf of who put in the most money was not, did not do a good job of managing the construction project.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of dirty hands around that, or unclean hands.
Yeah, we can do that better, but it's not free. You know, so I know on the one hand, you don't wanna repeat this stuff, but we can't, we can't fix this kind of thing in the future for free. It's gonna cost money when we build things for it to be done in a way that we can account for. I would make one other point. It is baffling to me that there's any conversation ever that these people ever underwent an audit of any kind. Because there is no audit with no accounting software. You cannot audit Excel records. And I don't, so, something happened somewhere above the regional system that I don't understand still, that allowed this to go on for more than a year. Because there were no records to audit, that I can tell.
All right.
All right, number 10. Thank you. Number 10, North Loop funding. So I think most of you have heard at least part of this conversation. I went to Keckin Wood up in Duluth about three weeks or a month ago to sit down with the guys for the first time, talk about the engineering, where were we in the process, talk about the culvert for the trail, you know, make sure we were all just on the same page. I wanna get to know the guys, because I don't have relationships with them. So several of us met together, and we went through the road, and then we talked a good bit about the waterline route, and then I started talking to them about sewer. And told them, you know, sort of this east-west sewer transfer that we wanna engineer, where we can get more of the Mirror Lake flow over to, you know, and can, is there some way that maybe the North Loop could help with that, you know? So we go through all that, we get to the end, and they pull out this sheet of paper, and it's a project summary that GDOT produces. And the last time they had pulled it was in November, and there's a line on it that refers to the procurement process, and before, in December, on that line, it had the phrase "GDOT let," which meant to them that when the engineering was done, that GDOT was gonna issue the RFP for the construction. They were gonna let the project, they were gonna bid the project. When they pulled it in August or September, that line now says something to the effect of do the plans and put them on the shelf. Using, had the word "shelf" in the thing. And what that meant to them from their experience was that the construction money had been pulled. So we made a couple of phone calls, and it looks to us like the money has been reallocated, the construction money. So GDOT right now is paying for engineering, they are doing land acquisition, they are even actually doing demolition, as the mayor can tell you out there on his street. They've actually moved and demolished some structures out there, okay? Moved some families and demolished some structures, but now it looks like the money is not available. So when the guys at Keckin Wood went to GDOT and said, hey, what's the deal? What they were told was is that Villarica had delayed the project by adding 20 parcels to the right-of-way acquisition. So when they poked into that a minute, what that meant was is that, is that because we went from intersection, red lights to roundabouts, we, there were 20 more pieces of property purchased. And because of that, it had delayed the project, and so they had pushed the money on to somebody else that was closer to being ready for construction, even though the roundabouts were done at their initiative. So this is now a political issue that the mayor and I, and our state reps, and the senator are all gonna have to get involved in with GDOT to see if we can get that money put back in place on a timely basis. We don't need it right now, because we're not ready to do engineering. But anyway, I just want you to know, you know, it's the project that won't get built, and that's not a positive thing. Questions?
Well, just commenting, you hit the nail on the head. I mean, they came to us, they being the GDOT, and I'm not sure if GDOT came to us directly or through Keckin Wood and said, hey, you know, we'd like to pay for these roundabouts at the terminus of both of these loops. At no time that I remember did they say, but if you do that, it's gonna delay the project by three years.
They didn't. They didn't say anything like that.
So, you know, that doesn't seem fair at all, and-
It was their idea.
And it was GDOT that came, not Keckin Wood.
So it was GDOT. So we're working through, you know, our representatives to get answers to those questions, because I just, I don't think that's acceptable. I mean-
Somebody pulls some strings and moved their project.
Yep. Well, that's certainly what it seems like, somebody else had-
This is gonna have to be dealt with at the political level.
Yep.
All right, any other questions?
Nope.
Number 11. All right, so we, we brought you a proposal to use Tom Walsh, who's the guy that you met through Woodstock, to help us with the Mirror Lake concept. He recommended that we sit down and talk to the guy that wrote the TAD legislation, a guy named Bleckley. And so somebody from his company came and met with Chris and I, what, a month ago? Three weeks ago? One of the things that came out of that, and this is the only reason I'm bringing this up, is I had done a calculation of what I thought the TAD increment was gonna have to be to support the amount of investment that we were doing, and I was using a couple of numbers that turned out to not jive with this guy's recommendation. So when you go to the bond market with a TAD, you don't know what investment is gonna follow to pay for the bonds, right? That's the first step in the process. The bondholder takes all the risk, so the city does not back the bonds. That was the answer to your question that you'd asked me a couple of times. So there is no, there is no general fund backing like we did, you know, like you would do with a, like a revenue bond a lot of times, where the revenue's questionable. So I was using 125% of the bond payment is how much increment I needed. He tells me that I need to use 250 or 300%. So we have to have a project that's planned to generate two and a half or three times more increment if it builds out than we need for the bond payment, and part of that is because it takes time for the increment to develop. because it takes time for the increment to develop, right? You got to attract developers, and you got to do the concept of what they're going to build, and then they have to build it, and then it, you have to wait till January 1st for it to go on the digest, and then you got to wait till the, you know, the end of the year. So I mean, there's a lag of several years as the project builds out. Plus, you got to build the road first, right? So, so anyway, so, so I'm now thinking, you know, 300%. And then the other things he said, because of what we're doing, we're probably looking at a 5.5% interest rate, and we're probably going to have to go out 20 or 25 years on the bond. And I was hoping to do something shorter than that. So anyway, when you put all that together, my first cut at that, you know, we're talking about 17 times the cost of the project, right? So if we were to do 10 million in investment, we'd have to have 170 million of increment, which is dawning, right? So we may, that may make us scale the project back some, but I want to not just do a road, I want to do water and sewer with it, I'm pretty sure. And it's possible that it will help us with this east-west thing, because this road and the Clegg Horn Lift Station are real close to each other. And it may be that if we can get flow from Mirror Lake down to Punkin Town and under Punkin Town or Mirror Lake Boulevard, that we'll, that we'll be able to run through the Scherner property with a gravity line to Clegg Horn Station. And so, does that make sense? So hopefully, we can tile that together. But anyway, so we're still pursuing the concept of this. Chris is working, has identified a guy that could help us with land acquisition, Walsh and BMK, who are the road engineers, have met with us once, and I can't remember what else we've done. Hadn't talked with Scherner in a while, but anyway, it's percolating along. The next thing is, we got to get this through the legislature, to do, to get redevelopment powers approved, and then we'll go to the referendum next November 18. Questions?
We're obviously very early in the process here, but that number is...
It's overwhelming.
That's a big number.
Yeah, that's a big number. I don't know if we ever reached that, but as long as, and this is just me speaking, but this doesn't need to defer any of our money or funds or time from, from the real issues here, which are water sewer issues. This is just something we're pursuing that, that's, you know, that we want to happen, but it's not a, it's not a need, it's a want. So, is that...
Yeah, it's, it's part of the five-year plan. You know, if five years from now, we could sit here, and we have a new road that's funded by new development, we would have really done something.
And if we could also say that we've addressed our water sewer issues, we've addressed our infrastructure issues.
Yeah, that's more in the three-year plan.
Yeah, I'm just...
We found all the leaks.
Yeah, if we've, yeah, knocked the dent in the list of leaks.
I think we just want it said out loud.
Yeah.
We don't hear about it later, that we're prioritizing.
No, no.
It needs to be clear.
All right, number 12. Just a quick update on, on the Harthouse. I'm hearing that First Baptist is continuing to move along with the senior housing project negotiation. Maybe Councilman Carter can tell us if there's any, anything more.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's still happening, so we may come back with that. One good thing
that's happened out there is Pete and the engineer out there were at loggerheads over the water connection for that new addition on the back of the building, and they finally got that resolved. So that took like, the whole time I've worked here, for them to, to get that sorted out. So that's done. Number 13, I've had...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So what exactly is the update on number 12?
Just that they're still talking. So this, this developer has approached First Baptist, and they, and so whatever, the best thing I can say is that the talks haven't stopped, right? So he's still talking, they're still trying to figure out if they can do a deal.
I think the issue is that we have heard before that that deal was going away, and it's back, and I think Tom's just trying to say, it's all still on track.
And they had multiple developers approached him, so.
That's great.
That's what kind of slowed it down.
All right, Villa Rica Housing Authority. I've had a couple of conversations with Dick Chambers, and I've ridden around with him some. His, his overall plan for the housing authority is it, is, is for it to change to a voucher program. So what, what he's intending is to build two multi-story facilities, one behind the old library and one across from Tanner, move everybody out of what we now know to be the housing authority facilities, which are like 140 units, and knock all those buildings down, or sell them, or do something. But he's going to get out of that business. And then those, those two bigger facilities, which will give him, give the authority more units, will be voucher funded, right? A different federal program than what they're in now.
They've been telling me that since I got on council, and they were waiting, but you know, it's the federal government, when they're going to, okay, you started hearing it before then, that eventually all that's going to be demolished, it'll be voucher. What I don't understand is the larger buildings, because they had said the federal concept now was to try to integrate these people in other apartment buildings, so that everybody's not living together. And I'm also concerned about, I don't know if it's changed, he said that there was also an issue with not being able to get rid of people as easy as before that are actually carrying on criminal activity or something on that property. So that should be a concern to us, if that's going on.
Yeah, also, people living in the units that aren't authorized to be there is a problem.
I mean, when I think of multi-story building, and sticking everybody in that, does that, like, take you back to the 70s and have really a lot of bad thoughts with it, of places that now they've torn down? Are they going back to that concept? Can they do that? Can, can they do that? Do we have any authority?
That's a good question. So what do y'all think about having him come to work session? And give us a presentation, and us questioning him?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, I get, I get concerns from citizens all the time about the crime rate, people parking in the roads. So, you know, I'm sure your office, Captain Sacks, I saw y'all here all the time. So, yeah, I would like to hear what the, what the plan is.
Okay. I'll invite him. Okay, another...
Let's do one more. David, can you talk just a little bit about what our role is? I mean, as a, as the city governing body with this housing authority?
It is a separate legal entity in and of itself. I mean, your primary role in it is having the ability to appoint the people that serve on the board of the housing authority. That, that's the primary interaction between the city and, and that board. You don't control them, other than you control who sits on that board.
Does that board make binding decisions, or is it a recommendation-type board?
No, they can make binding decisions on their own.
And we haven't, I mean, other than I had gone to some of their meetings, I mean, I'm not, I'm not getting any updates. We need to be having some sort of interaction with them.
I'd like a better, yeah, a better connection between us and that board, because frankly, I haven't been to any of their meetings, nor have I seen any of them come into my calendar or be sent to me. I, I, maybe it's you that should try to put that together.
Alyssa and I were.
I'm looking at David, but that's probably the wrong...
Yeah, we need to do that.
Okay, because I think that's important for all of us.
Do you get them, Alyssa? Do you get meeting notices from the chamber? I mean, from the authority?
But I can reserve any other questions for when Mr. Chambers visits with us.
Okay. Next, 14. Just something for you to be mulling over, is Sarah and I have worked on the budget this time. I'm getting this sneaking suspicion that in the future, that, that the way that the SPOLOST agreement was written for this cycle, that, that using the Douglas SPOLOST is going to be tricky. And Councilman Best, I think, was the one that raised the issue first during our two-by-two budget meetings. But, as weird as it sounds, we may have more SPOLOST money than we have projects, because of the language. The SPOLOST agreement with Douglas doesn't let us spend anything on administrative purposes. So it's limited compared to the Carroll one. So like, the computer network upgrades that we need to do, we can't get any of that money from there. And we don't, and we only have really two facilities, right? You got the, you got the Pine Mountain Museum, and you got the new Connors Park, Passat Park. And really, you don't have a lot of other places, if, if you're thinking facility, you know, oriented. And I, and I have been told numerous times that we're not putting any facilities in Douglas County to mount anything in the future, right? So I mean, that's, we're not headed that way either. So just be mulling that over about how that's going to work out in the future. Questions? That's just something that came up during the budget.
You know, if we can come up with some type of proposal of how we would like to be able to use that money, that's different than the literal wording of it, you know, perhaps we could approach them and enter into some type of an agreement that would give us a little bit more flexibility. I, I don't think that there was any hard and fast thought that they didn't want us to be able to, to use it for what we needed.
No, no. Like, we could still do police precinct.
That was my question about facility.
We've got, the contract itself allows, but I think we're talking about...
We can do streets. That's not where our street problems are, though.
Right, but maybe putting together some projects that we...
Water, sewer, all that. Don't we have some projects?
We can spend it on water sewer. We can spend it on the north plant.
Yeah, there is some water sewer stuff.
We can spend it on fiber.
In Douglas County, so.
But it is worth looking at, because it is a lot of money.
Yeah, it's almost 100,000 a month. So I mean, it's...
I mean, the question that was raised to me is, can we use it to buy police cars?
Right.
And it would seem that maybe we could work out some sort of an understanding that, you know, based on the population of Douglas County to Carroll County, that we ought to be able to buy X number of percent of our police cars with that type of, of funds.
Yeah, buy one out of three or something.
It's usable for the problem we have on Pooh Road, isn't it? I mean, that's in Douglas County. That's going to be expensive.
I was going to ask you if you had a microphone back there.
Sorry about that.
Number 15, is this an update from a meeting I attended? I know that y'all, y'all have a lot of history with Southwire. I went to their annual little dog and pony thing, and listened to the new guy, and talked about where they're headed. Those guys are a behemoth, and they are going to get behemoth-er. Their plans are to go from 5.5 billion in revenue to 7.5 in just a very short couple of years, and 10 billion in just a few years after that. And what they're doing is buying companies. So they have, they've sort of maxed out the conceptual part of the cable business. And so what they're doing is they're buying tool companies that, that make and sell tools related to the cable installation business and maintenance business, and they're buying connector companies. So all the stuff that happens on the end of a cable, they're buying those companies. And they're going global, right? Because they, you know, they've been predominantly a domestic provider. But they've got multiple functions, multiple sales organizations. So they do utilities, they do construction, you know, I mean, they, you know, they approach those markets differently. I mean, it is a really, really impressive operation. And their management team is very impressive. The new guy that's running it is very impressive. So I don't know what our relationship with them is like, but they're a monster, and they're going to be even bigger.
I'm sensing that you have, I mean, there's a reason this is on here.
I'm just, I'm just wanting us to, again, to be thinking, because there's nothing like that out here. There, there is no equivalent in scale to those guys within how far. Until you get back into Atlanta, and you got Home Depot, and, and, you know, Coca-Cola, and, you know, the truly, you know, world-class few people that are headquartered in Atlanta. But out on this side of the state, I mean, they don't have a peer, do they?
No.
I mean...
That's been the question. I had some inside information. Actually coached one of their engineers, coached him in football. Got a chance to talk to him, and this was several years ago, and he made those statements then. If there is a piece of wire that's ever generated by Southwire, they own every company that, including the metals, including the, the backing, including putting it in the ground, up until the time they give it to, or sell it to the power company, and then they, in turn, come back in and, and redo things, warranties of wire and stuff of that nature. So the power company really has nothing to do with the wire at all, except put it up. And sometimes they don't even put it up. But like you just said, everything they do, the trucks, the, the patents, they put these wires, it's made in their company owned by Southwire. It's the most amazing thing I heard of then, and it's still pretty amazing, even to the, you know, conglomerate of Coca-Cola and all those people. They don't have, you know, we're either close to what these folks are doing. So, and it's, like you said, all over the world.
So we need to be a good partner with Southwire.
We need to think about how to use that relationship.
Yeah, they may be in the market for more land.
We had a tour about, what, three years ago out of Southwire?
Something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, the morning before our little get-together, they were meeting with the CEO of Home Depot, which is, you know, one of their bigger customers. So, I mean, they, they have huge clout. We need, we need to take advantage of that. That's my point and all that. So I don't know what each of you, what kind of relationships you have, but we need to develop those as we go.
Can I ask, I want to ask you a question on one. Our comprehensive master plan, where are we at on that?
That's, that's the next one on mine, because I added it.
Oh, okay.
So I got the bids in. I have five proposers. My, Brennan and I went through them all. AMAC was head and shoulders the best one. I met with them today to go through, you know, sort of where Villa Rica is today, and how they felt like they fit in with that. They're, they're interested, so I'll be bringing that to you work session. And we, and we got to get on it. That's due to DCA in October of 18, so we need to have it to them in draft form around June. So, so we'll be doing the project basically from January to May, as far as public involvement and all that. And then they'll have maybe December to start, like, getting their data together. But they have a lot of history here. They've done Spring Lake Master Plan, the mill, I don't know, four, they've done four or five different projects here. I may have that written down. Mayor, you, you've worked with them probably as much as anybody on a lot of those projects.
They were formerly MAC Tech, as you may remember. And they changed names to AMAC, and then you told me today they had changed names again.
Yeah, they're changing names again in about 100 days. Fullville Trailhead, they did. They did the Gateway Project. They did a plan for a splash pad at Goldust. So I'm, I'm sure you, you've worked with them probably on almost all of those. So anyway, they're, they're very familiar with us. They've never done a comp plan here, though. So that's one thing they haven't done here. But they've done comp plans in about every other place that I've ever heard of, so. Been around a long time. So that's coming. That's it for me, unless y'all have questions. I'm sure there, I mean, there's other things I just didn't think of, put them on the list. So if you got questions...
What do you do in your spare time?
That's a full, that's a full list.
We got, we got a bunch of stuff going on. I'm telling y'all that the staff are really working hard. Stephanie, is the staff working hard? Charlie, what do you think? Chris? Man, y'all?
I haven't seen a PowerPoint lately.
Well, not only that, but we, we still have not approved the budget yet, have we? We can get some cuts, a red line. You got the red pen right there. Ms. Rooks, do we have anything else coming from, from insurance, as far like we had a while ago, approval of any other kind of program?
Probably, and we just don't know.
Probably, we just don't know. Yeah, Wendell is...
So, did this just pop up on you all too? Because...
Yesterday, or Mon- No, Monday.
I just, I want, you know, we've had the candy bar, and then we've had the truck, no, the truck, you know, the transmission. And I just wonder what else is going to come.
We have buckets.
Oh, bucket, yeah, buckets, buckets, that's right. I just wanted to know what else. Oh, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion that we, we don't have any...
No, no executive session.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn to a higher second. Have a motion second, I want a favor. We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank y'all.
You didn't have to read that.
I don't think we can read the motion again. Hey.
Yeah, that's a ton of stuff.
More complicated all the time. And when you mentioned they're going globally, they are going. They've been there for... Okay, globaler.
So, because what they have now is they have international sales offices.
Oh, yeah.
But they haven't gone into international manufacturing. I think that's where they're headed.
Go back to the game and bring socks.
Absolutely.
We've never been reimbursed for soccer with all the residents.
You're right, that we need the biggest, good apartment with them to get us something. They are going to be...
It's the biggest attraction.
They're the biggest. Well, they're over there, though. That's right. I don't know what they do over there, but I know it's over there. That's what he's talking about. He's talking about that area.
She was the good old boy, not the only woman.
I mean, that's... I still want to know who that is, though, because we were told it's a secret or confidential. So, let's run it, yeah, but we need to find that out. I mean, I just want to know. Right, and the lady who spoke said they want to keep it a secret.
I don't know who else run it.
Somebody is planning this. Oh, okay, that's true.
I like it, Bobby's going to fit right in. I think Ladisa's going to do good, just take her ball and get it to everybody. Bobby has...
David, how are you?
I can hear them. But they can't hear. Yes, I like it. That's exactly what I like. I want you to tell us if you want something from us, though, what is how to ask that question. Right now, this is up...
I feel like I'm trying to bring y'all along with what has happened
And this is what we would do if that's additional. That's what you're doing, you're reading us, we're reading you, we all feel warranted. And now, this is supposed to be the stuff you and I have talked about. But you did it in a way that all of us got it at the same time. Maybe all of us haven't, but you did it in a very public way.
There is no question that everybody in here just about heard something I didn't say.
So, I get to hear a little bit. Yeah, I mean, you brought some stuff up today that I wasn't... Yeah, I didn't, I don't like that. Well, what I was trying to read out of that...
To let us switch between time and cash. I don't remember a dollar, but I'll go back to other...
Well, hold it to that, I want to know.
Heard what he said. He says, yeah, did you ask him the correct question?
So, what I'm saying is you followed up, and he said, you're the one that's going to tell me. And he said, let me do a little work there. Well, he's... Few months.
We're good, we're good, so I mean, I...
It could be, it might not be, I doubt it. I don't really believe it. Look, I don't mean to sound selfish, but I think...
I agree with that.
He made for the street, greet the crowd and...
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, but that's how you get where you get. I mean, you know, it's a process, step by step by step.
Is that library board thing...
I am sick of that. I am sick of that library.
Talk to me.
Hey, do you know what, do you know what you wanted? Or do you want to talk to me after, or you don't want to talk to me now? I don't, hey, hey!
Just going through the options, huh?
Right. I didn't want to walk out when I know he had something.
Tell me, how do you like that update? Is that good? Not too long? You wanted it a little shorter? You didn't get me an Elmo, so I took that.
He probably left it at home.
I'm not trying to have a dang two-hour conversation.
It was too late.
You got to tell me what's, this is the hardest part, what's not on there that you want me to talk about? That is really difficult to do. Like, to put that together, I go back to my calendar, I go back to my notes, trying to remind myself, because I can't, I just, I can't keep it in my head.
There are other things that we're going to want. I mean, I can tell you me, but I'm telling you that thing is so full that there's so much going on, that just so much that the public can absorb.
Cody, what's your comment now, after all that?
Yeah, I was going to see if you wanted to speak.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm very pleased, Tom, with your, what you're getting at.
Is that not a blast?
But what my thing, like, you're asking for accountability on the library stuff. Get some frickin' accountability on, how come? You've got smaller pipes where we're supposed to have larger pipes. How come?
Sure, but we don't understand the actual...
How come there's no GIS on this stuff?
Okay. It's incomplete, and a lot of it's wrong.
But I want to hear Carter Best in Marchman says, well, this comes from doing more for less. Because that was Jay Collins' mantra.
You know that that's maybe my favorite statement since I've been here when you got up.
I told you.
About the mayor's challenge or whatever. That was as well-timed and as succinct and appropriate as anything I've heard since I've been here.
This is bullshit.
This was, it was incomprehensible.
That's ridiculous. And you're an accountant, and I'm not, but that right there is a mess.
Oh, it's in...
Well, where's the library board? Where's Clint?
Clint going on the regional board, I think helped bring this to a head. And even Clint, who is not an accountant, got in there and started seeing how they were operating, and even he figured out, man, this is not the way you do anything. So, I think, I think we may owe a little bit to Clint, but, man, I, he owed him some fairness in that meeting.
Have you had that lunch yet?
He was in the meeting when I got this presentation. He was offended at my...
You, yeah, you pushed him under a bus or something.
Yeah, he felt disrespected in the little, in the meeting. I'll tell you, my, I went from being aggressive right up to just being a real butthole with that guy, because he pissed me off.
Well...
Deliverer, evasive...
And I'm not going to say anything to you about this, because I've said enough to you since you've been here. I just want to remind you that we record all of this, and we stream it live. You basically said this guy was a jackass, and that he talked in circles, and I know, but you did it live right here.
What do you mean, almost did?
What, you want to redo it? You didn't say that.
No.
He's one of these people that talks and talks, doesn't say anything.
He wants to say that, too.
He has the ability to talk and not say anything, and everybody laughed, because they know exactly what kind of person I'm going to be.